Welcome everyone to the Dune Water District Board of Directors meeting. The regular meeting of June 21, 2017. Notice for considering by doing have a regular meeting with the board of directors of the district. We know that the one verified on the 28th day of June at 5:30 PM for consideration of business on the individual loan. This notice is posted at the office of the district on June 23, 2017 at 12 PM in order to the section of the meeting deck, section 7 of 551-041-551-050 and copy per se to county clerk and examiner captain. Would you have the presence of the floor, all of the boardroom members present? I wish to have everyone stand.
The Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a living justice drawn.
Father, we just want to thank you again for another opportunity to come and do business, district business. We just ask you to guide us and lead us in everything and all decisions that we make, Lord, that we do our best, uh, and for the district. We thank you in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Moving on to item number three, consent to the audience for discussion. There isn't an audience other than Scott Moore, who would like to address anything, open the republic. Thank you. I'm sorry.
I said my good question.
Uh, moving on to item number four, consider and accept the letter from Vice Chairman, Mr. William Dick Thomas stepping down, and Vice Chairman to the Director.
Motion not to accept, relax. Too bad. Well, I'm the favorite of that.
I ain't going there.
My motion to not accept the letter of resignation, we have a second.
What you mean, or am I evil?
No, this is not for the discussion. This is just for the bottom line, yes, no, I don't want to be vice chairman anymore. What you got?
No, I don't have, I don't have, no, I don't.
That's just a boula, you can't propose to my debt, just put it down to my debt and tell me I have to take part, well, you know, all those in favor? I oppose, the record Jeff opposes, go vote. I also oppose the motion carries unacceptable.
I respect Mr. Thomas's decision. If that's what he wants to do, that's what he needs to do.
Anyway.
That's right.
So we have a motion to fail.
So I'll make a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll say that. (Laughter). Is that legal by Mr. Thomas? Is that legal second?
You guys are doing good on the Robert Schroeder's border.[200.12][200.12](Laughter).
Respect by Mr. Thomas, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Vote.
Do you all oppose? Motion for acceptance accepted. Motion for, uh, I'm sorry, stepping down accepted. To item number six, item numbers five, consider and approve the appointment of Vice Chairman of Dune Water District Board of Directors.
I'd like to nominate Jeff Capel here. I'll have to respectfully decline the nomination, please. I'll make a motion, Mr. Thomas.
Decline nominating. Is a motion.
I'll make a motion for Rick Wells. He also didn't move.
Motion made by DeWells for Arwell. And I'll decline.
(Laughter). Hardest position or no?
Motion made by Thomas, all those in favor?
Procedurally, how does that work? We made the motion and they declined to accept the nomination. Does that make further action as on that particular nomination or something?
Well, essentially, when you make a motion, you can ask, when there's a motion on the table, you can ask for, are there any comments? So he's essentially making a comment prior to the second to vote occurring. That way you can have information. So, uh, his statement, I decline, doesn't affect the motion, but it provides information to the voting body.
And then we would need a second for the motion to carry through or not correct the assets of section, second, the motion should be adopted.
What did you do to cheer the council? I mean, no way they can force me to be the vice chairman of this committee, is it?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No.
You said, oh, so where are we going if there's only one? Well, maybe.
You know, it's not something that we necessarily have to resolve tonight. If you give me and Mr. Belmont an opportunity to figure out a game plan and maybe meet with you, maybe talk to you, a few of you about the importance of filling this role, we will resolve it by the next meeting.
Counselor?
Yes, sir.
And Vice Chairman, four and a half years, that's enough.
So.
It's a credible motion, if that's what you want.
You can just table one, we, it's not something that needs to be filled in.
Why, why? Because I remember my days as mayor, because it's because of you, because of you, we need this vice chair. Oh!
Uh, let's move on to item number five. We did a motion to favor. Item five, consider and approve the one of the vice chairman of Dune Water District Board of, we did that item. Item five, consider and approve the one of the vice chairman of Dune Water District Board of Directors. DeWells, that's a motion to table the item. Is there a second to table the item?
Right.
Are all those in favor?
Aye.
That's right. And, uh, we're like the, Thomas stands, Mr. Capel here. Is this in favor?
Yes, right.
In favor, vote to that to table. Moving on to item number seven, thank you. Hopefully everyone will go home and have some great consideration. Item number six, you're six, great consideration, consider their position on the board. Item number six, consider approving minutes of the workshop meeting on June 17, 2017.
No need.
Being by Thomas, second number to Capel here.
Questions specifically?
Yes.
And then this agenda item number six, and then it's also included agenda item number seven. They were to amend the workshop in the revenue, number seven.
There was two workshops, and that one was official from June 17, the other one was from June before June.
Show myself, that is freedom, so. Thank you for whatever questions.
Consider and approve the motion made by, uh, Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. Capel here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed number one, the man number seven, consider and approve the minutes of the workshop meeting on June 14, 2017, and then July 17, 2017, by Mr. Thomas and by Mr. Capel here. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that was very essential, we had no case, you know, managers or people.
Is there, I have several items here that they did complete, hurricane's purpose, and consider a package for all, so you can, you know, keep up with hurricane season, and give, have meetings, updated, you know, while we're doing the list of, uh, the week double items in emergency. Folks, uh, just pretty quick on that one. Uh, it's all completed and everything, all the information is in there, all prepared for the hurricane, if it does come, anytime. And we will be, I will be in touch with you guys if there's any, uh, you know, warnings or that come up. And that's pretty clear on that one. Then the next one that I have here, I did call Fish, uh, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Department on the property, uh, see if they could, uh, you know, have access for a pond reservoir. They were interested in it. The one that I talked to was at the lowest level, but he said he talked to his superior, and he hasn't gotten a call back from him. So, I talked to him yesterday, he said, well, he hasn't called me yet, but as soon as he does, we'll pass on the information. So he's interested in having water out there, and I told him it's fresh water, because it's going to be going in and out. Uh, there is some pros and cons to that one, because, uh, the good thing is that we can store water, but we need a pump station to pump it out, if we do, but, you know, we'll come to that when we do. So, it's a good.
One pump and valve.
That's right. Just to circulate the water. And, uh, the next one that I have, the monofill, if you all recall, that we had a cost of twenty-five thousand from the existing company that, uh, to clear up that monofill, and then the lease, the minimum was about ten thousand. But, uh, we did it in-house, we just wanted to let you guys know that we, they completed that one about maybe a week and a half ago. Yeah, so, we're using the monofill, so.
On that question, I know you're concerned, uh, the, uh, part of the equipment, you did that, you met with, you dealt there, all eyes, you did your.
Yes. Yes, everything turned out pretty good, quick, so, so, you know. Uh, the next one, the audit report, I did receive today, the final completed one, and I don't have anything on the agenda to approve, that Mr. Haro Barera is, uh, out of town, to be able to see it, but he did not, so, as of today, and we have a week and a half to do. And, uh, that's all I wanted to give you, the information, so.
Never know.
Yeah, so that one is completed, there wasn't much changes on, from the draft, but that's what it is. The next one that I have is the wastewater license, uh, we have Mr. Jose Gasa from the wastewater site, he passed his C license, so, he wanted the board to know, and congratulations to him. We've got a new C operator to maintain the wastewater treatment, thanks. That's all I have, do y'all have any questions? Anything?
Correct, it'll be done, it'll be done. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number nine, this is the board's house.
Right, yeah, the first item's just an update on our river pump station and water rights in general, and, uh, we are working on that bid to go ahead and clear out all that silt in the riverbed. So, yeah, on the river pump station?
Are we going to get it dug out?
Yeah, we're, we're putting together the bid package right now to advertise and get it, get somebody awarded.
I've only been thinking about, pardon me, I've only been complaining about that for four years.
Well, it's going to get done this year.
Want to be out?
All right, and then the other update was on water rights. Well, hey, better late than never. It's kind of like the water plant, well, I guess I'll be drifting off the subject. Uh, but, 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 okay, anyways, so as far as what I wanted to say about water rights is, you know, we did do our order in June, um, but, uh, for two of those days where we were supposed to be pumping off the river, they had some problems with their gates, and the water level got too low for us to even lift out of the river. So, you know, it was one of those conditions to where we should really be thinking about a contingency plan, like, you know, an alternate water supply for those times when there's malfunctions in the river and drought conditions, where regardless of how many water rights you have, if the river's dry, you're not going to be getting anything out of it. So, um, that's just basically, uh, you know, we had two days like that occur here in June, um, just to let you know that that incident did occur, so.
(Inaudible).
Oh, well, I don't know if you want to talk about it in more detail, though, or?
We got a toll problem, the watermaster's state, and they knew what was made in, uh, the river's water, so we had to monitor our monkeys, and then we got to go, and, uh, we pumped it overnight, and then we had to, uh, run it, so.
Well, that's just, I'm afraid of current.
Yeah, it was just something, I think they had a gate in the river system malfunction, and that's what caused the pushwater not to make.
This concept, you have an allowance on consideration of future rights, and future considerations of occurring sources.
Right, right. I mean, the water rights, of course, there's still that potential, we buy more surface water rights, of course, it's always going to be there on a regular basis. I mean, you know, it's just like we're talking to Fish and Wildlife to see if we can put a plan together, you know, and, and they're interested, so I'm sure that we'll have lots of follow-up on making an agreement, you know, in that regards.
But, what I understood, just that what you're saying was that we need to consider something, that the river may dry up.
Well, it's just drought conditions, right.
So, I'm calling that clarification, because that's our best.
Yes.
I'd rather not be, that causing any undue concern.
Right, and, and the issue is municipal rights, we have senior rights, so, so there's a ton of Class A and Class B rights that would get, um, prorated before ours would ever be done.
Well, I just think number one, this is before everybody else on the river might correct.
Well, I mean, the municipal, I don't think they've ever done proration for, for municipal aside from, we're one of four districts that gets prorated on municipal rights, so that's why, you know, technically, we're a hundred and eight feet short at this time under drought conditions. Um, so basically, you know, to purchase some water rights, you know, in that range, that would resolve that issue today, so, or if we can reach an agreement with Fish and Wildlife, that could be another option to resolve that short, that gap. So, you know, it's just, same way we're at. Oh, yeah, and I guess the, the second item here, I guess, do you have any other questions on water rights, or, right? Yeah, this other one is, is just an update on this Water Environment Federation. Um, it's, it's the wastewater equivalent to American Water Works Association, and, uh, I guess where our annual membership is due, and, uh, we, we were basically doing, you know, just basically getting all the, all the membership renewals done at once, and through this utility partnership program, there's actually two board members that can get a free membership, and so we were just wondering if there were two people on the board who'd like to receive it, so, and, all right, so I guess we can ask God, and, uh, all right, I don't know if there's anybody else who'd like to get a membership for Water Environment Federation. Well, Water Environment Federation, it's just a professional organization to promote wastewater, wastewater and stormwater, it's kind of a national organization. And then the other part of it is, is they have, like, WETTEC, it's kind of their annual conference, similar to ASO we went to in Chicago, and so their conference is going to be coming up here, that end of September, first week of October, and it's going to be there at McCormick Place in Chicago. So, you know, members will get a discount if we want to plan a trip, to that effect. Um, so it's just one of those options, I wanted to present for discussion, see if anybody wanted to become members at this point.
I'm understanding, boy, I see the information is active of WETTEC, and are you saying, you know, are you planning to attend somebody, or is it a patient, the board member that are part of the group, membership to attend? What did you ask?
Well, right now, I guess it's expressing, is the board interested in attending this conference? And then we would make our formal request at the next meeting, this is just discussion only at this time, and then it's also the fact that we need to redo. It's, um.
Question for September, I know, October 4.
Yes, September 30th through October 4th, up in Chicago.
(Inaudible).
And, and so I guess the, the question is if, if we want to have a formal request at the next meeting for, you know, board members to attend the conference, or something that we've done, you know, prior?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm still a member of the board.
And I believe, let me, let me, I believe Mr. Ortiz is mentioning that if you want to attend that conference, you have to register and be a member before, so that's the question.
(Inaudible).
Yes, right.
Okay. Or is the district planning on attending, can even the staff do that?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, that's something to discuss at the same time.
Right, I mean, the, the travel request, because the deadline for early registration is July 14th, so.
It's not, it's not just travel, well, the travel's just a question.
Right, it, it would be, so, so all the travel requests is basically, um, I was planning to put it on the agenda for the next, the first July meeting, and today it's just, we're going to do with our membership renewals, you know, just to get the discount in place if we're going to.
They have to send in the whole conference packet, so that's going to ask them all these questions. Good job, good job, Charles.
All right, but, you know, it's there. So, so, I mean, as far as, even though we have two board members that are, that would be free, I mean, do we want to get memberships for all five, and just pay the extra three? Or just limit to two members, or how should we handle something like that?
And the cost is?
Oh, I don't have it in front of me, it's like a hundred and something, something in that range. I have a copy of the invoice.
As a member, even if they didn't attend the conference, wouldn't there be information available to those board members if they wanted to look at such things?
Yeah, you, you receive them.
Advantages to being a member, just have access to the information.
Correct.
But I look really good now for.
Right, yeah, you'll receive the monthly publications and have access to, you know, webinars, the technical information for water reuse, you know, wastewater, stormwater, all those aspects of it.
That's my question, thank you.
Moving on to item number 10, Director of Planning and Boarding.
I would like to propose, uh, a date for the budget workshop for fiscal year 2018. We've already met with the managers, I already have a pretty draft of the requested budget, and, um, I would like to meet if possible on the second week of July, that will be July 6. Um, we can meet hopefully before the meeting, and then, um, the, the, the time of practice with the, with the budget committee.
It wouldn't be the 6th, the second week, it'd be the, that'd be the first week.
The first, yeah. The second is from the 10th to the?
You have the one week, what you have?
Should be the 12th.
The 12th. That's, uh, right before the 1st, right before the 1st?
Before the 1st.
Or the 12th.
So, you're proposing a budget, a budget workshop?
Yes, we already have the numbers, and, uh, and of course.
You're discussing a budget workshop this time, but what are you doing with the budget committee in preparation for the workshop?
Well, uh, the budget committee needs to meet before that, and for that is individual communication for the budget committee.
Are this discussion now, if you're, if you're, if you're, if you're, if you're out of business out here?
Okay, then, um, then we have to meet one week prior with the budget committee, so we can, the budget workshop.
If this is, if this is an agenda item, I don't think the board has any calls to this, this discussion, yeah, so, go ahead, you get the preference there, and we get back to the budget committee, and get their input on what works with them.
What works, uh, what they work, but hopefully will be, you know, within the, um, first or second week of July.
(Inaudible).
Well, that's me, Jeff, but, so that'd be, the workshop, you're still looking at the convenience of 12, but how much time do you need for that now, or the workshop or after?
At least an hour.
That, that, if you do it that way, I, I like that, but if you do it that way, you've got to open the meeting, because you have a regular meeting right after that. So that can be good to have. You know, if we're running long, we're pretty much all in.
I don't have a problem meeting the week before, after July 4th, do you? You going to be around?
I am, we're talking about, we're talking about.
A budget committee?
Now.
That's correct.
Right, so I'm okay that way. And then, the, the 12, if you do the, if you do the fourth of regular meeting, have the workshop, that answers my question, how is, as a person, get the information.
You all ready to let the email with, uh, with the committee?
I don't, I don't look at email, I've always told, I've always told you all to call me.
Yeah.
Email's bad.
So we can discuss that under your report right now, can't we? So, board, this on Tuesday, Monday, Thursday, or Friday, you know, we do the committee workshop, or sometimes.
Friday will work for you?
Friday is finally, at this point. We would build, like, for.
It'd be the 7th, it'd be the 7th, it'd be the 7th?
The morning?
It's Friday.
You like the 7th?
Yeah, that's fine.
7th, 7th of the morning?
Oh, 7th.
7th of the Friday?
That's mine.
7th?
7th, I'm okay in the morning.
No, you're not, you like the 7th. You like the 7th.
Good morning.
Good morning.
10 o'clock?
10.
Okay.
So, please send emails to my, or to the phone call.
Sure.
We don't see one?
Yes.
Moving on to item number 11, consider and approve a resolution adopting the right claim on the personal policy of the Dune Water District, resolution number 1490617, oath.
Yes, sir. If you see that I did put the existing section 207 and the new section 207, you know, had a chance to read it, and it does, uh, on the resolution, it has, uh, like, the new one, which is mentioned, the board of directors will hire a position of general manager, the general manager will hire all administrative positions, is authorized to prove to hire all other positions under management, and everybody else.
I moved, moved up. You mentioned for the 1, Mr. Capel here. Respect by Mr. Thomas, all those in favor? I, all those in favor, opposed, on board, on both. Record, uh, DeWells opposed, Rick Wells opposed, and after I thought about this, I think I'll, I'll say. We move on to item number 12, consider and discuss the loss approval of water tower lease agreement for I and Y, or if you're not on any of the things.
So, I reviewed, I reviewed, there's two agreements, one is the site access agreement, which is basically an agreement to allow them to go and test, uh, to determine the viability of putting them in a tenant there. And then the second is the actual water tower lease agreement. They're, in its current form, they're not drafted, favored with the district, you know, uh, under the site access agreement, they, they reserve the right to do all sorts of testing, and there's very weak language regarding what they have to return the property, the condition of the property to after they've tested it. And so I'd like to strengthen that language, I want it to be substantially similar, uh, not reasonably similar, I don't know what reasonably similar, similar would be. Um, and then I just, there are a few other things, but the site access agreement is not the one that concerns me, the one that concerns me is the actual water tower lease agreement. The initial term is for five years, but they have two automatic renewals for an additional five-year term, so essentially, you can look at it as a 15-year term, and nowhere in there does it say that there is a gradual increase in rent that's tied to any type of market standard or crime, so this is essentially a 15-year contract for your thousand dollars a month. Um, there's a five, five hundred dollar signing bonus, which is nominal, um, they have every right to terminate the agreement, we don't, aren't given that reciprocal right. Um, there's some insurance language that I think that the agent who represents the district on their insurance policy should look at, because I'm not an insurance expert, and I think it's important that the insurance agent look at it, just to give us his take on what type of insurances they're requiring, because they are requiring insurance, for example, they, they want us to have, and we might already have it, but full replacement cost insurance. So, let's say we have a elevated water tank, and they have a tenant on there, some policies will give you different reimbursements or insurance coverage, they want the policy that completely replaces that elevated water tank. I'm not sure we have that policy, but that's a, that's a more expensive policy.
Well, that's none of their business, anyway.
So, yes, yes.
Mr. Chairman, yes, is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Can I just, maybe just a few, there's a few more comments, uh, there's, and I'm sure this is not going to change your motion, but I just wanted to make sure that I, I did, so, uh, one other concern was, we probably do repairs on a pretty frequent basis to our water tanks or other infrastructure that they want to attach to. They're saying that we have to pay for the cost of temporary relocating their antennas while we paint our towers, do whatever, so.
That's what, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we just calibrate.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we just tell Verizon that we don't want to do business with them at this time.
Motion to not accept the lease and remuneration.
We don't want to do business with them.
We've got more water experience than you, because I understand.
I would, I have questions to counsel upon this, that, you know, in this, but then I don't, if we do that motion like that, we can take and have that.
Mr. Chairman, you got a call for a second.
Second.
You got a second, so I need more clarification on what you're doing. Your, your motion is not approved. So we know it's not agreed, how is it a question? I'm not, I'm not clear on the motion. The motion was, at this time, we don't want to do business with Verizon under any of these conditions, period. So that would interpret as saying you don't want to take and accept the lease agreement? Absolutely not. Do no business with, with Verizon because they're like, and, and. She got the writing down and then it's, and on his ass, a little more specificity. Okay, and after, the motion is that at this time, we let Verizon know that we no longer want to do business with them at this time.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
When you say no longer want to do business with them, do we have a current lease with them?
No.
No, so, uh, maybe it would be proper to.
Counselor, I just want to get your.
To refine your motion, to refine your motion to say we reject the proposed lease as submitted to modify Verizon.
The motion is, at this time, Verizon, the wirelesses, requests are totally unacceptable. And at this time, until they bring us a better deal, or I don't know how to put that, until, until it's.
An acceptable offer.
If it's an acceptable offer, don't even call us or something like that, I don't.
I'll second that motion.
We've got two seconds, two motions, now we've got one second.
I think our protocol is lost, right, and we have a session.
Although, this session, session, I, uh, you will.
Counselor.
Yes, sir.
And you mentioned there's two agreements, and one of them was really just kind of a site assessment agreement. What specifically were they looking to do as far as the site assessment, or just go on to determine?
It's my understanding that they're intending to determine if our infrastructure can, can sustain the antennas and other equipment that they want to attach to.
So for them to make a viable offer to the district, it would be advantageous to them to look at the site and make that determination if they're going to take and make potentially a better offer to the district. So you're, we have a motion on, for two agreements you're talking about. And so I'm certainly in favor of allowing them to do a site assessment of the tower. And then carry on the rest of the conversation after that. Is there any daily slide to the site assessment that can be detrimental to the district?
There are a few, um, correction, changes I'd like to make to these agreements. Because right now, they are, um, there's pretty weak language regarding returning the property to what it was prior to their testing.
So I don't have a, well, I'll look at the force before they make an all that fine, essentially that's what they want to do.
Correct.
So maybe, or Mr. Thomas, of that, we can get a clarification of which agreement he was speaking to.
I, I think he was, okay, yeah, that, that would.
I know, I have a comment. I did send you some information on the new email that, that they, they come up with some better numbers. I don't know if you see the email or not, but there was an attachment.
Verizon was revising the numbers, like, on what business?
Correct, correct.
Well.
So it's, it's just a matter that we.
See, we're, we're, we have agenda items here, reference documents that we don't have because there's some work in progress. So, you know, maybe we can get a, a action out of the board that takes and allows some assessments after the, the, our legal and, you know, manager have determined that it's all right for the district. And then get into, get into specifics of, well, I'm only first with a master agreement.
So what, what?
Always said by two seconds is motion to table.
Yeah, so you could, you could table and then, and then instruct us to continue the conversation.
Well, I think, again, they need to know what they want to offer, and the only way they can do that is make an assessment of what they want to review.
So I, I've worked on these agreements for other jurisdictions. And, uh, you know, they're, they're going to want to get in here for the lease amount that they can pay, so. Right, exactly, right, I mean, that's their business model. Now, uh, I haven't had an opportunity to speak with their representative or their attorney, maybe, maybe the concerns I have with their language, they'll agree to some changes. But I think if you want to carry, move forward with the motion, to not move forward with the agreement as proposed, you can do that and then instruct Mr. Galvano and myself to ask for changes to the proposal, including an increase in rent and other things that will protect the district.
The agreement, Mr. Thomas, is that I was asking about the two agreements, your motion was the agreement overall. And the discussion was about, well, they may need to go ahead and do some site assessments to make a proper master agreement, but it's proposed to us. My job, when you would have to make an amendment to the motion.
Correct.
You can do that in under the amendment, the first vote voting. I'm going to accept it, enough. Once you make an amendment to the motion, you first have to vote on the motion. Because amendment don't matter until the motion passes, and then you vote on the amendment, and if it passes, then you make the motion as amended. My crafty, you, you law, you clarify your motion.
Or you can clarify.
My initial motion was, I don't want to do business with Verizon because if they get that, they want to be that worried about things, I don't want to do business with people that make me want to know what size shoe I wear.
Well, they usually think they get sixteen hundred.
So their, their revised, uh, their revised proposal as, as referenced by Mr. Galvano is fifteen hundred with a two percent escalation every. So they went from, but, but that's not in the contract that I reviewed.
Right.
Uh, but the escalation with an annual escalation of two percent. So they're, they're getting better, they're becoming more competitive.
That's the comparable that we have.
Correct.
When we get into the negotiations. So right now, I'm in favor of letting them, letting y'all go ahead and work with the site agreement, site assessment agreement. That works well, and then we're going to do more of an amendment. On the amendment, amendment motion to say that we approve the site assessment agreement. I don't love it.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, if you like, you, you can, you can vote on the first motion that was sec, made and seconded. Which is to not accept the, the Verizon proposal, and then you, you can vote on the second amended motion, which is to move forward and negotiate in a site agreement so they can come and do this.
Sorry, David.
Whoa, my.
No, okay, so let's just do the first one. Let's, yeah.
And you vote on the amendment.
Right, take the role.
So there was a motion that passes, it's amended for.
Correct, seconded by Mr. Wells.
Seconded by Mr. Wells, Arwell.
Arwell, to move forward.
Not move forward with the proposed lease agreement.
All those in favor?
All those in favor. I, under any opposed.
Opposed.
On the record, you all opposed.
And you can vote on the amendment.
The motion. The motion passed.
Correct. Now, motion has passed, correct.
To not accept the proposed agreement.
Correct.
Amendment, there is a motion, and then to amend, we oppose over.
By well.
But the usual twelve states, they want to propose.
Site access.
Site access.
Site access for possibility. Two, the motion would be to authorize general manager and legal counsel to proceed forward with the site assessment agreement and present that to us at future time.
Correct.
That's the nature of the amendment.
That's correct, yeah. Now.
Is there an exception for the amendment? An exception for the amendment?
So what's, so what's your advice?
Yes, sir.
For both sides.
Okay.
The second is, excuse me, the second by Arwell, for all of those in favor. I don't know, but they are. The opposed, for the record, Mr. Kevin, I'm going to vote for motion, amended motion passes.
Correct.
Wow.
All right.
I'm going to read this, I'm going to read the voice, yeah, well, it's a deal.
From God, every heaven, God.
We're on, it's around now, but I don't want to end that, but I'm finally discussing it, wait a time.
Cooperation and discussion for possible two or three professional engineering services. Only if I have an engineering design, emergency generator.
Thank you.
Well, that's board act and I don't want them to, so, well, considering discussion, okay, so, okay, it's not, uh, why do you need one? Do we have one now? Well, we, we haven't got a report yet.
Yeah, yeah, no, we don't have one. I mean, right, right now, we have about three or four services, uh, here in, in the administration building. And so this electrical work is to get all, all our services and a new transfer switch tied to a backup generator. So when, um, there, basically power goes down, or we have a long-term, you know, number of days for hurricane or something, when no electricity, we can have power to this building for our, you know, hurricane preparedness or emergency planning. We can run our, our, you know, incident command system here out of the main building.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question on this, Charles.
Yes.
Why do we need any, get an engineer involved with this? Let's just get an electrician involved and be done with it. We don't need an engineer for this, this is the building we're putting power to.
Let me, let me tell you what I know, is that, uh, the buildings were, were done separately. First one was first, one phase.
Okay.
Second was done with another meter.
Okay.
The, they can't combine, uh, one phase with two phase, or three phase, isn't it, three? So it's all.
Excuse me, question to the chair, are you trying to tell me we're working with three-phase current in part of this building?
Um, the AC is, yeah, I mean, there's, there's differences in, in the services.
Somebody explained, maybe there's a single phase and three phase, three phase current. One, I, two, two. We have one meter that's coming in and has three phase, aren't on the.
There's only, there's only one meter, and then they split into different services after the meter.
Okay, well, we've got three phase coming to the building and has.
Yeah, there, there, they would, the, the, basically, the plan here is more or less to do a gutter box to tie all four services to a new transfer switch and then tie.
One more question here, Dylan. We, so what in this building is operating on three-phase current at this time?
I wouldn't know, I mean, um, you know, offhand, AC system?
We don't doubt it.
Yeah, I, I really don't know.
No, we don't, going in home electric and having him come over and look at. Therefore, we always, brother, we have to have a motion to discuss.
No, we don't.
Yes, we do.
Not a motion to discuss, have the motion.
A motion to discuss.
A second before we proceed to the discussion.
No, this is the discussion, it takes a motion.
I mean, the, I guess, if, when it comes time to, well, 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 let me, let me be able, because I didn't give a good response to Jeff Kepelger's question as far as the need for an engineer.
Yes.
And so I guess, you know, to make it cut and dry, any mechanical, electrical work that exceeds eight thousand dollars, it's public, which is us, requires a professional engineer to perform the work. So if we expect the cost of this generator and transfer switch to exceed eight thousand, which we do.
Hey, so.
It would need a sealed set of plans.
All right.
And whether that's done through the electrical, electrician?
You're saying that state law requires us to do that? Or whose law requires us?
Uh, the, yeah, it's, um, the Texas Board of Professional Engineers requirement.
Is that true, Eddie?
He says that.
Um, for mechanical, electrical work, if it's above eight thousand, then it requires the professional engineer.
How do we know it's above eight thousand to get the, the generator hooked up?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, the, the only thing that I would, I am aware of regarding, uh, the need to hire an engineer would be, and, and the policy of hiring engineer or procurement laws, I'm, I'm not familiar with the requirements of the Board of Engineers, so.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, I, I.
Right, because that falls.
I would need an engineer to provide you that.
Right, it falls under my license, and really, for civil work, it's, the, the brake line is twenty thousand, and then for electrical and mechanical is eight thousand, that's when you need to have a professional engineer.
I'm watching to do it for seventy-nine, I don't think it's.
Yeah, I mean, let me, let me get the estimate from the electrical contractor, and then we'll see.
The oil turn, then my, then it's back to me.
Thank you. I'd like to back this up, my understanding, right now, this building does not have emergency backup generators.
Correct, that's correct.
And somewhere along the line, somebody's made a decision that that needs to be put in.
Yes.
That needs to come to the board to make a decision if we think that that needs to be put in or not.
Correct.
So you kind of got ahead of this.
Well, there is.
Generally, we're going out for engineers, and we're questioning here right now the need from engineers, just using our, some expertise we have with board, and to force them. And you're telling, well, we got this building over here, we got another building, and we got three phase, two phase, I dig all that stuff, I deal with it on a daily basis. You can also put, put in two little backup generators to work for two different sites, if that's what you need. There's ways to do this without coming to us with an engineer's request of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, when the person is going to sell new engine, the generator can tell you what you need.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, other question for, for staff. We, we have an electrician in-house, don't we, somewhere?
Yes, we do.
We have an electrical department, can't they tell us what needs to be done for this generator? If, if, if we decide, if the board decides whether we want to have a generator or not for this building.
I mean, for, for.
We, we never even discussed that, and all of a sudden, it's being brought to us, I'm with Mr. Wells on this. I make a motion that we, uh, that we not approve.
It's time. And I'm setting on.
Yeah, that, that, I don't want to discuss. Now, I will, I will do something, if you will give a date, uh, in case we have to break the C P N L seals. I'll come over with my meter, and I'll go through our electrical system, and I'll tell you whether anything in here, even though we have three phase coming in, you step it down to, uh, anyway, I, I'll tell you whether we have anything working on three phase current. Does your loss cover that? No.
Well, I mean, I, I can contact a master electrician, who, we don't have a master electrician in the house, and they're the ones who'd be authorized to perform this kind of work. And so, I, I can follow up with, uh, I, I can contact some master electricians and, and go directly on that route, see what we can do.
There's a motion made by Mr. Keplinger, there was a motion, Thomas, all is in favor. I, I, not opposed, much carried. Proceed with the live discussion that we had tonight.
We launch to item number fourteen, consider approval of financial reports by Phil, approved September point sixteen, January through May point, some of the fiscal year twenty seventeen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to not approve these financial reports until we have a, uh, until we approve the final budget from last year, in the last fiscal year's budget. We can't approve these reports until, until we have a final, final budget from last fiscal year, if you're on the budget committee.
Um, if the budget crushes the financial statement you proposed here.
Correct.
I'll say that, and then we have a question.
We don't, we don't have a base to go on because we've never finalized the last fiscal year's budget, so we can't, until we do that, you know, we can't approve new fi- new financial reports for a new fiscal year.
Based on a lacking of an audit.
Well, we haven't approved the audit yet.
Correct, correct. So, you're saying you want to look at the audit before we approve the financials?
Well, we have to, we should approve the audit before we approve the financials.
We get sent with an option, a question on the motion.
Mr. Keplinger, this is seconded by Mr. Thomas, uh, this is for discussion.
When is this coming from, oh, I know it's a new firm now, but it's, it's supposed to be, it's me, he got down, I probably was going to be here a lot, I didn't, when is it going to be here, I don't know, whether to take this place or anything.
Next, Hugh, he will be here at, at the next board meeting, uh, July, April, I think it's July fourth, maybe.
So, there's a motion made by Mr. Keplinger, seconded by Mr. Thomas, all is in favor.
All right. Verdictation of motion, why do you not accept and not approve, not approve, pending the line of audit.
Correct.
All is in favor, all, all is in favor. On item nineteen, consider for the disbursements. So, I'm asking for recent disbursements, renewed disbursements, not approve all of the disbursements. Mr. Thomas.
Gentlemen.
I'm asking for Mr. Thomas for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Arwell, all is in favor.
All right.
We are in opposed, none, much carried, thank you. On item one, item sixteen, consider executive session permitted by the opening of the act, making clean, the opening of section five five one, zero zero one, and subsequent coming section five five one, zero seven one, consultation with the current section five five one, zero seven three, deliberation about real property, item high, this is a, excuse me, this is a, Holly Beach education, item B, considered as study, demand for full engineers, speech, consultation with attorney regarding the accident, before the emergency report, title, motion on executive session at six forty P M, with a five hundred, we said, five.
Second.
Motion made by Dwell, seconded by Mr. Keplinger, all is in favor.
All right.
We are in executive session, we will be good, come out of executive session at six fifty five P M.
So, move.
Motion made by, uh, Arwell.
Good.
Seconded by, uh, Mr. Thomas, all is in favor.
All right.
For the record, uh, former member Keplinger is not present. Uh, we do have the rest of the board here for forum forum, moving on to executive session, item A, no action, item, uh, B, no action, item C, and the discretion to proceed in the best interest of the district as instructed by Arwell, I mean, adjourned, I need a motion for approval.
So, move.
Motion made by, uh, Mr. Thomas.
Sorry.
Seconded by, uh, Arwell, all is in favor.
All right.
We are not opposed, much carried, we need to adjourn at six fifty six. Thank you.
Happy Fourth of July, folks.
Yes, happy Fourth of July.